The CATS organization is open 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. For example, the people standing behind me are some of the nurses and support staff. Some of them were up until 4 o'clock this morning, working on 12 cases within 12 hours. That's the kind of dedication that they have. They do critical work on behalf of the city of Los Angeles. They do critical and precious work by working with these young victims and families. And it's important for us to understand that we should always keep an eye on this organization, to be aware, when they ask for help, we need to be there to give them help. Unfortunately, they're likely to be needed for many, many years to come. But as long as they're needed, I think it's incumbent upon all of us to give them the support that they need. So at this time, I'd like to ask Kathy Adams to come forward and say a few words on behalf of the organization.
My name is Kathy Adams. I'm the Clinical Director of CATS, which stands for Center for Assault Treatment Services. We're part of Northridge Hospital, and our neighborhood is Van Nuys. We're sitting in a room that's an examination room at our center. And one of the things that we really wanted to do was to make sure that the facility was victim-friendly and the environment was supportive. And for the children that we see, we've wanted them to be in a setting that looked part-like setting and was very comforting, and with a police officer involved, that looked approachable and very friendly. Because often, our victims are brought in by the police, and we want to see them in a very caring, nurturing manner. When a victim comes into our center for an evidentiary examination, there's a couple parts that are involved. First is the forensic interview of the child or the adult. After the interview, we come into the exam room. And it's much like any other examination that a child might have at a doctor's office, a physical exam, of looking over their body, seeing if there's any scratches, bruises, marks that we may want to photograph, with some of the equipment that we have here. This is a colposcope, and we use that for examination of the genitals. Now, this exam does not hurt a child, it's not an internal exam, but it's so that we can visualize and maybe collect photographic evidence that may be used later in the courtroom. We also have separate equipment, a special alternative light source that we would wave over a victim's body to see if there's any biological evidence that maybe we can't see with our eyes, that we want to may swab and collect. And all this is gathered and packaged into a special kit that's used by the crime lab. And those crime lab analysts will go through that kit and see if they can pick up any DNA or other evidence of the crime that may be used in court. CATS has contributed greatly, I feel, to Los Angeles in several different areas. One area is in education. We have an outreach component that we've trained thousands of teachers and daycare providers on mandated reporting, so that we can give the education to those people that are on the front lines to recognize it and report it and help stop it. I feel one of the big challenges that LA faces is that of interpersonal violence. We see that all over our city, it's across all genders and ages and ethnicities. In the United States, we know that every two minutes, someone is sexually assaulted. And it's a very personal crime, it's very embarrassing for many people to talk about. And there's also many offenders as someone that that victim knows, and so there's concerns there about reporting the crime. I would advise that if somebody is not sure about reporting, for whatever reason, that you talk to someone that can help you work through it. There is a 24-hour hotline manned by counselors, and the number is 818-886-0453. And there's also a national hotline number, 800-656-HOPE. We're hoping someday to build a justice center, a family justice center, that we'd also incorporate interpersonal violence and domestic violence. LA is the city of support. There are many people out there who support you, that are behind the scenes, that you don't see every day, but when you have problems, there are people there to help you. My name is Kathy Adams, and I'm the supportive face of LA. LA is an exciting place to live. We've got a lot of diversity, different cultures, different languages, truly a melting pot, and there's a variety of everything.
In the aftermath of a disaster, you may not be able to rely on your knowledge of your home. You might also not be able to rely on your guide dog. The dog may be injured, frightened, confused, panicky, and/or disoriented. Be prepared to calm your dog and to keep it confined and securely leashed and/or harnessed. If you use a cane, remember to keep it readily available to assist you around hazards and obstacles. Keep a spare by your bed and at all exit doors, as well as a spare leash for the dog. Ensure that your guide dog is microchipped and that their license and identification tag have current contact information. Guide dogs can accompany you to an emergency shelter. Just as you need to prepare an emergency kit for yourself, you need to have one for your dog. Ensure you have enough water, food, any medications they may require, and a first-aid kit. A blanket or rug and favorite toy may help calm them as well. Keep your veterinarian's name and number in the kit. Vaccination records may be required at the shelter. Only you know what can prepare and assist you and your family during a disaster. Are you prepared? For additional information, please contact the Department on Disability or the Emergency Management Department by calling the numbers on the screen or by dialing 311.
LA City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Take up items eight through twenty-two with the exception of nineteen.
Twenty-one at the desk.
Yeah, twenty-one for Mr. Rosenthal. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on the ballots. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved if we can send without objection fifteen and sixteen forthwith, please. Next items.
Items twenty-three through forty-five are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. And on item thirty-four, that matter may be received and filed.
Okay. Item thirty-four, we'll move to receive and file. Do we have cards in the public on any of these?
Yes, Mr. President. There are cards on item twenty-three.
Okay.
Twenty-seven.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-eight.
Mm-hmm.
Thirty. Thirty-five. Forty. Forty-two. Forty-three. And forty-five.
Okay. We'll open and close the other public hearings. Mr. Gardiner?
Yes, item twenty-six, if we can put it over till next Tuesday.
Okay, that would be one week, November twenty-fifth without objection. Okay, so ordered. Yes, Mr. Rosenthal? Okay, thirty-eight. We'll call special for Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Zine? Thirty-three for Mr. Zine. All right. We will hold twenty-four on the table as an ord- as well until we have twelve members. Mr. Gardiner?
When appropriate, if we can go back, on behalf of Weezer, reconsider eighteen.
Eighteen?
Special.
Yeah. We'll come back to that. Thank you. Let's go ahead on the ballots of these items. Please open the roll. On items twenty-six, twenty-nine, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-four, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-nine, forty-one, and forty-four. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Then call the roll for the special meeting, please.
Hello, Cardinal, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zane, Garcetti. Ten members present, Aquor, Mr. President.
Okay.
This is a one-item agenda. Item forty-six, an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
We have card from public, so we'll call that special. And if we can continue that into the regular meeting and adjourn the special meeting. We still are waiting Ms. Han and Mr. Weezer and Mr. Reyes, if they will please make their way down as soon as possible so we can consider the ordinances. If we can reconsider item eighteen, please. Please open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And we will hold that on the desk. Let's go now to general public comment. We have a clock to help folks time their two minutes. We welcome public comments on items that are under our jurisdiction but not before us on the agenda. We'd like to start with Richard Kearns as our first speaker. And after that will be Mariana Tosca. And very good morning, Mr. Kearns.
Hey. Good morning, President Garcetti and distinguished council members. My name is Richard Kearns. I'm a fifty-seven-year-old gay man living with AIDS in Los Angeles for more than twenty years. I'm a long-term survivor. I'm an AIDS activist. I'm a medical cannabis patient and advocate. I'm here today in support of a letter I understand Councilmember Zine and others are sending to City Attorney DeGadillo asking what has happened to the medical cannabis ordinance. This is a little confusing to me because I just ran into Councilmember Labonge last night at the West Hollywood City Council where he talked about running into the city attorney, which makes sense because you're all in the same building. And I wondered why you couldn't just give a shout out and find out what was going on with the ordinance. Will the city's ordinance reflect the input of the community? That's the important question. I understand the need to be a bit more formal about it, so I say, fine, send a letter. Send flowers, too. The letter should say that just law is good medicine. Just law is good medicine. Medical cannabis is the single most significant in-place but unaccessed AIDS treatment option available today in Los Angeles. Medical cannabis improves our chances of survival three hundred and thirty percent, and we are only a fraction of the community medical cannabis serves. Just law is good medicine. Just law is part of the cure. Thank you very much for sending this letter. I urge other council members to sign it, too. How quickly do you think the city attorney's office will respond? I really want to find out. Thank you very much. Namaste.
Thank you very much. Mariana Tosca is our next speaker. After that is Zuma Dog.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Mariana Tosca. I'm an actor and native Angelino. I rise to support the closure of the Los Angeles Zoo's elephant exhibit and to release the remaining lone elephant to a sanctuary. There is no valid justification to remain entrenched in the position that L.A. needs an elephant exhibit. Frankly, I'm stunned that there even remains a question as to what is the appropriate thing to do. Elephants die prematurely in zoos. The mortality rate in confinement is staggering. The argument for conservation is a hackneyed PR spin. The argument for education is equally tenuous. It's about gate revenue, period. Yet I submit that all twelve of the zoos that have closed their elephant exhibits have reported no revenue loss. The inevitable demise of Billy and all the other elephants who will be brought in will rest on your reputations, on your resumes, in your legacies, and perhaps even on your conscience. By the same token, releasing Billy to a sanctuary and closing this antiquated exhibit will earn you the respect of those who have voted you into office and will guarantee you a place in the pantheon of Los Angeles's great compassionate leaders. It's imperative that you listen to the voices of your constituents and use the power that they have entrusted to you. Close this exhibit and send Billy to a sanctuary. Constituents, like elephants, have very strong social networks and very long memories. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Zuma Dog. After that will be Jennifer Farrell.
Yes, something a little different today. Many of you might not recognize me. My name's Zuma Dog. I'm candidate for mayor, and I'm out on a signature gathering campaign throughout the city. I learned real quick, the hat and glasses don't work so well when you're out there in the mass appeal trying to get signatures when you're running for mayor. So you might have recognized me this weekend around the city at the shopping plazas. This is much more of a signature gathering look, so look for that. Maybe, I'll probably put it, I'm not very comfortable, I can't even talk good like this. It's kind of like Peter Parker showing up instead of like Spider-Man. And, but I am running for mayor. I'm not on the ballot yet. I have to get the signatures. I've got about three hundred. I'll probably need a thousand to get five hundred. And so I've really, go to mayor09.com for more. But let's get down to some important things. It's been a great experience for me out here this week talking to hundreds, maybe a thousand people about, the first thing they ask, you know, what's important? You know, many people don't just sign. So the message I've learned as I've been gathering signatures running for mayor is take back the city. First thing they like to do, gee, Zuma, what do you think as mayor? What would you do? First of all, the waste of government money that's supposed to be given to nonprofits to provide services to the community, the most underserved, in-needs communities. Well, I'm here to say that the city council and city hall, well, they have their own nonprofits set up. The money gets funneled into their own cronies, and then the money doesn't make it into the community. It falls into disrepair. Then they say, now, we need to give you some more taxes to help fix all the problems we just squandered all the money that was given to us for. Number two, I've spoken out against density. I learned quickly also that, well, a lot of people are for growth and density and new things. So I had to change my message to, the city talks a lot about housing. They, housing, housing, housing. Well, it's all luxury, upscale, million-dollar housing, and no one in the city can afford it, so it's sitting vacant. The values are dropping, and then people can't live in the city. They have to work. They have to live in the outskirts. Much more homelessness is coming. So those are some of the important messages. Zuma Dog for mayor. Mayor09.com. Thank you, Los Angeles.
Jennifer Farrell is our next speaker. After that will be Barry Kramer. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Farrell. I am here today as a collective operator and a member of the Greater Los Angeles Caregivers Alliance. My purpose here today is to once again encourage the city council to adopt a permanent ordinance regulating medicinal cannabis collectives within the city of Los Angeles. It is my understanding that the city attorney has yet to present you with a reasonable ordinance to enact. This is quite confusing to me, as I know that he has been presented with not only suggestions from Councilmember Zine's working group, but he has also been presented with the Attorney General Guidelines and examples of other ordinances which to draw information from. It has been over a year since you enacted the moratorium. This is more than enough time for Mr. DeGadillo to have presented you with a working ordinance. Because the city has been unable to place regulations or guidelines for us collective operators to follow, we, as the Greater Los Angeles Caregivers Alliance, have instituted strict guidelines of our own. Our alliance works tirelessly to create a positive, respectable image for the medical cannabis community. Those of us who have registered with the city and have agreed to follow the guidelines set forth by GLACA are eager to work with the city and to work within whatever guidelines are set forth by the city as long as they are reasonable and responsible. As the moratorium grows stale, there are illegitimate pot shops that have opened up. These shops are a detriment to our community. And yet, without a permanent ordinance in place, no one or no department wants to take the responsibility of enforcing the moratorium. We need to move forward, put in place a permanent ordinance, and begin to enforce the moratorium that is already in place. I urge you to contact the city attorney's office and encourage him to get his work done and complete and present you with a responsible ordinance that reflects the input given to him by Councilmember Zine's working group and the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Barry Kramer is our next speaker. After that will be Virgil Grant. Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, council members. Thank you for hearing me today. My name is Barry Kramer. I'm a resident of the city of Los Angeles. I'm a medical cannabis patient, and I'm an operator of one of the one hundred and eighty-seven medical cannabis collectives that have registered with the city of Los Angeles. My main thrust of what I want to say to you today is that I'd really urge all of the council members that have not signed on to Dennis Zine's letter to, please, give that a deep consideration and help us out here. I'm reminded of a couple of things while I'm up here, because I've been here a number of times now. Councilman Labonge said at one, at one meeting that Los Angeles works best when it works together as a, as a team and teamwork. And we're here, we're always here to talk to you, we're here to help you. We've helped with Councilman Zine's working group. We, we are a team player, and we're here to get things right for the city of Los Angeles and for our patients and for the patients that are here in Los Angeles. I also had something strike me when, when we said the Pledge of Allegiance. It's been a long time since I've stood up with people other than at a sporting event to say the Pledge of Allegiance. And someone here today said, just law is good medicine? Well, we just all said liberty and justice for all. Liberty and justice for all. We're citizens, we're constituents, we're people. We really need movement forward on this, on this letter. And I thank Councilman Zine and, and the other council people that have signed on to this letter, and I urge you all to sign on as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Virgil Grant. After Mr. Grant, we'll go out to Van Nuys, and we'll hear from Miriam Fogler after that. Good morning, Mr. Grant.
Good morning, counsel. My name is Virgil Grant. I'm here representing GLACA. Greater Los Angeles Caregivers Alliance has worked very hard in the regulatory process for medical cannabis. We have taken responsibility and shown good faith not only to the city, city council and the city of Los Angeles, but the communities that we service. Integrity is one of our main focuses, and our reputation as GLACA is impeccable. We are asking the ILC to step up their enforcement efforts in the regulatory process for medical cannabis. There are many facilities sprouting up here in Los Angeles, and we are afraid it will be a direct hit on the regulatory process. And not only that, the industry as a whole. We are asking the council to sign on with the medical cannabis ordinance and start the enforcement of this ordinance. Thank you, Councilman Zine, Rosenthal, and Councilwoman Janice Han. Please urge other council people to sign on to this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Miriam Fogler is our next speaker in Van Nuys. She'll be followed by Donna Perman. Good morning.
Good morning. Well, I have a cat I got to get home to. She's a very old cat. She means everything to me. The, the proposition R, the people voted for this thing, it looks like, and if you did, if it goes through, folks, you're going to expect to have triple the gridlock you have now. They're going to tear up Van Nuys Boulevard, Sepulveda Boulevard, Reseda, and Lancashire Boulevard, so they can hook it up and then go directly over the pass. This is going to clog up the 405 much more, folks. This is going to be a waste of money. Proposition R is also going, is going to also help the CRA come in, do intimate domain against businesses and homeowners. So people who voted for this thing and are the ones that are going to be affected, it's going to, you're going to be sorry. So this is, this is going to be real bad, and the spending is going to be wild, folks. So we're going to have, we got, we got Democrats in office in Congress and the White House starting January twentieth. I'm praying for this president-elect to come in, that he's going to do the right thing, but, you know, unfortunately, I don't think, I don't have much, I'm very pessimistic with Democrats, and I don't like what the Republicans did, too, either. You know, the whole matter is that the public just doesn't care. There's no accountability. Everybody just votes for tax increases and tax yourselves and tax yourselves, and, folks, you can't even afford to keep your homes, let alone you can't even buy a house, I mean, apartment, I mean, or condo here to even get a housing here. You're just putting yourselves, you're putting your, you're hurting yourselves by passing all these things that the politicians put on the ballot, and then you vote for it. We almost had a parcel tax placed on us. Folks, that's a very, very bad idea, that you people voted for tax increases. Very bad idea. You're going to go way up, and the governor now is also talking about raising the taxes here, so we're going to be paying over ten percent. Can you imagine in ten years, folks, it's going to be maybe twenty or thirty percent? Sales tax? I don't see how the public, the poor are going to be able to keep up.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Donna Perman. Then we'll come back here for Karen Bonadilla.
Okay. Hello, Mr. Garcetti.
Good morning.
Anyway, I guess people like to pay extra taxes, like property taxes, sales tax. Why do you let them dupe you into paying more when you have less money available to you? I'm really mad that people let the city council have almost everything they want carte blanche. There's no accountability for federal government. Both parties, state, city, are public. No checks and balances, and when it'll get worse, too. And I'm sure Janice Han will probably get her money for her gang thing, and then it might, I'm sure they can find it. That would be a huge mistake if you ever passed another parcel tax like they wanted. They have the money if it's used correctly. There's no accountability for council members, state, federal, or public. I'm very upset about Pop R. You'll get CR prejudice all along the MTA corridor. They will use eminent domain, and everyone will get CRA. That will be the big CRA dream. I see that they don't only want the subway to the sea, they want the subway for the valley. You can't tear up streets all along the valley. Van Nuys Boulevard, Sepulveda Boulevard, Reseda Boulevard, Lancashire. I do not believe you can tunnel under and have a huge amount of cars overhead without danger. We should fix our buses, not put on subways. Remember the mishaps when the red line, gas leaks? You can't happen, it can happen, you can't make it happen again. Maybe, maybe it will be bigger, more troubles. Reseda is too small. You will hurt businesses everywhere. Take away parking, which will hurt businesses. You can't let this happen. Overturn it. Lastly, I want, I want to go against about fee wa, oh, yeah, I want to put a conjunction against Pop R. I want to get rid of this. We need to get rid of this. It's going to be a disaster. And I want to talk about the fee waivers. There's still a lot more fee waivers that can't be here for that, and five of them over five thousand dollars, especially that Hollywood parade, which I'd hope is not really ninety-four thousand dollars. That's up to ninety-four thousand dollar question. Anyway, get rid of fee waivers and stop, people, stop passing these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Our next speaker is Karen Bonadilla, here, and then John Walsh. Good morning.
Good morning. I, when I talk about elephants, I always get emotional, so I just want to talk about the facts. Fact, the usable square footage for these elephants, and I mean more than one, because the L.A. Zoo has intentions of bringing possibly eight to ten elephants, will be an elephant exhibit in four pens. While three of the pens may be opened up for the elephants to move around, Billy, the bull elephant, who is the lone elephant there at the zoo, will never be able to get out of his little area. Bull elephants are very strong, and they have to be put into a situation where they can be controlled. So Billy's, Billy's life as it is will still be as it is, as it is in a new exhibit. Fact, how much does it cost to house an elephant a year? As a taxpayer, I'm offended that this wasn't even brought into the equation when the elephant exhibit was voted on two years ago. Fact is, it's about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars per year per elephant. If we have eight to ten elephants, you're talking over a million dollars, and that doesn't include medical care. Do you, any of you know how much it costs poor Gita to have medical, medicine and medical care for her foot, a direct result of osteomyelitis that elephants get in zoos? Eight thousand dollars a month. You know, I mean, nobody knew about all this. The other fact is, trying to, trying to create a breeding program, the twenty-five births in breeding programs in the United States in zoos, out of the twenty-five elephants, only six are still alive. It's just, the bottom line is, elephants need space. We know that. We have researchers who tell this. Joyce Poole, a famous researcher who has lived with elephants and has given us everything we know about elephants, has told us this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comment today. John Walsh is our next speaker. Then we'll go back to Van Nuys for Rick Nightingale. Good morning, Mr. Walsh.
Good morning. This just in, I hope you don't think that Antonio just went back to Washington, D.C. for his health. Big Labor wants him as Secretary of Labor. They are pressuring Obama. Obama's done an investigation on the, on the side for Rahm Emanuel. There's so much dirt in Antonio's career, he's not getting Secretary of Labor. That is what's happening. The Times isn't going to tell it to you. Mr. Rosenthal, we want to know what's happening with the elimination of our cable access station. Most important thing, I hope you don't, to hope, think, you don't think that we forgot about your demolition of the historic building in Hollywood Vine. We will be bringing that, in fact, I was going to arrest you in a federal citizen's arrest, but I decided not to do it, Mr. Garcetti. You violated state law. The most important thing right now is Measure R is being stolen. There are three hundred thousand challenge ballots being counted now by the registrar. We have asked Deborah Bowen, our Secretary of State, to come in there and be a poll watcher. They are disqualifying challenged voters, particularly Asian voters, in the San Gabriel Valley because they profile as most likely to vote against R. R can be defeated. Now, what can you do watching television, watching television right now? Call Deborah Bowen, nine one six six five seven five four four eight. Nine one six six five seven five four four eight. She's the Secretary of State. Tell her you want to open an investigation and ask for a case number. Make a formal complaint. They have to act on it. My case number is two two six eight. They sent out the mail-in ballots all over the world ten days before the, for Measure R on the ballot, ten days before it was approved, the enabling legislation by Arnold Schwarzenegger. This is a city with no laws. They treat us as evilly as they treat the elephants. They consider us all animals. We're all animals to us, and they are cruel to animals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Our next speaker is Rick Nightingale out in Van Nuys. Morning, Mr. Nightingale.
Yeah, good morning, Rick Nightingale. I'm still appalled regarding what you're doing with Laurel Cheeks regarding the city attorney's office. I'll tell you, you know, she's doing her job, like I said before. The only one is doing her job, far as I'm concerned, and you turn, you people are holding her back. It's just like putting the reins on a horse. She wants to run, and you want to hold her back. She's the only one that's trying to get something straight, and there is so much, and when you have six hundred attorneys, and, and you don't think there's any corruption, and shake hand, and out the back door, you're, you're in another world. I mean, that's her job. That's what she's elected to do. Granted, somebody could get in there that could turn around and, and go for, just to be auditing. Now, you could pass some rules to turn around and make sure nobody tries to go after somebody with indundancy. That's fine, but this is going too far. Same as you people. The council has turned around and, and got into fraud and everything else and got caught regarding contributions to your, to your campaigns and so forth. And now, because you're worried about she is going to go after you, too. And this is the whole situation. And I think you better straighten up and let her do her job. And now, let's get back over to the gay thing. I'll tell you, you people better do something about this, all these activists out there and all this trouble that's on the street. We had a watch riot a few, quite a few years ago. We had another riot after that. They were taking it from that, that there is no penalty to what happens when these things happen. Nobody was accountable during the watch riot. Nobody was accountable for these others. They think that you go to violence and turn around and get your message across. And now, these people are getting violent. They're turning around and going into restaurants. They're turning around, getting on the internet, finding out who donated money, going in and protesting. There is going to be another riot, I'm telling you right now, and it's going to come that way, and there's going to, and there's going to be the blood on your hands when this thing comes around. Just because some of you are completely for the gay situation, you're supposed to be neutral. Neutral, neutral, neutral. And you better do your job.
Thank you, Mr. Nightingale. Our next speaker is Hamid Khan, and after that will be Daniel Wright. Good morning, Mr. Khan.
Good morning, Council President and council members. First of all, just as a resident of Los Angeles, the other gentleman was speaking, I just want to say that we will stay out on the street until this legally sanctioned homophobia is overturned in the state of California, and we will continue to fight this. So, you know, there's, there's a much more, larger majority that speaks out against discrimination and bigotry and homophobia. The item number twenty-nine passed with consensus. I just want to acknowledge Councilmember Gruel's leadership on the taxi cab industry issues. But again, I would really impress upon this body that the next year and a half, two years are going to be extremely critical. The seminal UCLA study driving poor highlighted this industry rife with corruption, self-dealing, harassment, exploitation, and the more we are digging into it, we're finding more and more about the health and safety issue of the drivers in Los Angeles, taxi drivers. To the extent that some of the UCLA folks just finished a study and found out that the, just the access to toilets and bathrooms and as a result of the industry and, and what they don't have is resulting in high, high rates of kidney problems in the drivers. So we will come back with that report as well. But I just want to end by saying that as we move forward, we would really impress that the transparency remains out there and to send a very strong message to the industry that harassment and retaliation will not be tolerated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Daniel Wright is our next speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. Daniel Wright, four six seven Crane Boulevard, on behalf of the Friends of the Southwest Museum, where you can learn more about the Autry's failed stewardship of the assets of the Southwest Museum at www.FriendsOfTheSouthwestMuseum.com and at www/blackhatblogwordpress.com. Council members, you've been handed today a copy of a flyer distributed at the Southwest Museum's Intertribal Marketplace. The Intertribal Marketplace, for more than sixteen years, was a signature event of the Southwest Museum. It reinforced cultural heritage tourism in Historic Highland Park. Visitors coming to the Intertribal Marketplace often visited the Charles Lemus House, Heritage Square, Juddson Studios, and patronized restaurants and businesses. The Southwest Museum is a cultural and economic development anchor for the northeast of Los Angeles. All of that was unnecessarily stolen away from the historic, this historic area of the city in two thousand and six, when the Autry Museum unilaterally moved the Intertribal Marketplace over to the Autry in Griffith Park. Vendors from the Intertribal Marketplace have told us that they miss the dramatic location of the Southwest Museum and the more intimate link with the patrons afforded by this location. of the Southwest Museum and the more intimate link with the patrons afforded by this location. The merger agreement included promises that all programs of the Southwest Museum would remain at the Southwest Museum site unless it was necessary to move them. Yet, the Autry Board of Directors continues working toward removal of the entire Southwest Museum, its exhibits, its collection, and its beloved children's programs to Griffith Park. This council will soon be asked to join arms with the Autry Board of Directors to help it carry out a breach of fiduciary duties it assumed in exchange for being entrusted with the assets of the Southwest Museum. Please move with careful deliberation on this culturally sensitive issue, and please have your staff look at the websites I've cited. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wright. That'll close our general public comment. We now have 12 members, if we can take up items one through six, please.
Mr. President, actually, it's items two through six.
I'm sorry, two through six.
And 24.
Okay. Please open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Thank you, those are approved. If we can go to the next item called special, please.
Item 18 was being held on the desk for Councilmember Weezer.
Okay. Mr. Weezer, item 18 was held special? And then, we have number 19 for Mr. Wesson.
Can I have the CIO give a brief update on this, please, if the CIO is here?
Okay, do we have CO staff here? Or CLA? Is there anybody here from the CO's office on this side? Oh, there we go.
Could you please just give us a brief overview of this item? Thank you.
Okay, Angelica Samayoa with the CIO's office. The recommendations, at least as they were communicated to you by the Housing Community and Economic Development Committee, recommended approval of the CIO recommendations, which did two things. Approve the results of a request for proposals that was conducted by the LA Housing Department for the citywide homeownership foreclosure assistance program. It also authorized the general manager of the Housing Department to negotiate and execute a contract with the LA Neighborhood Housing Services, a California nonprofit corporation, to provide homeownership assistance, foreclosure prevention assistance to low-income homeowners through this program. And this is a $100,000 contract that would be effective from November the 1st, so it would now be retroactive, November the 1st, 2008, through March 31st, 2009, with two one-year renewal options. This funding is provided through the current-year Community Development Block Grant Program. So, that's kind of just a brief overview. Some of the services to be provided under this contract will include counseling services for individuals who are at risk of losing their homes, and that would include working with financial institutions to develop workout plans, to prepare financing, refinancing requests, as well as referring clients to other legal services as needed.
Great, thank you. And how many residents would this assist or estimate it to assist?
The estimated number at this point is 1,000 clients, citywide.
Thank you. And when did the program begin?
This would be the first year that the city initiates this program.
Well, thank you. I just simply wanted to highlight this as one of several efforts that the city is undertaking to assist those individuals who are in a situation where they face possible foreclosure of their homes, and I understand this will help low-income people get some assistance from the city in the event they find themselves in that situation. As you know, I put in a motion to ask that the federal government, and I understand the state may also have the power, to call for an 90-day moratorium on all foreclosure so that residents who may possibly renegotiate their terms of the loans if we have a moratorium. But this is a small step, and what else is the city doing to assist Angelenos that may be facing foreclosure on their homes?
At this point, to our knowledge, there is, I believe the Housing Department would probably be better able to speak to other existing efforts. As you may know, the bigger neighborhood stabilization program does not currently assist persons who are at risk of foreclosure. That program will only assist persons who are properties that are at foreclosure at this point. The department does have other homeownership assistance programs, and they have other subcontractors that they work with on a regular basis to provide at least outreach to tenants. I guess one example I can think of is the Rent Stabilization Ordinance, and they've really tried to make sure that tenants of multi-unit property dwellings, apartments, understand their rights, that they cannot be evicted simply because a property has been foreclosed. So, that is a program that the department is currently trying to make sure that tenants, lenders, and property owners understand how that program works.
Great, thank you. And finally, I think a lot of the interest in some council members and others in the city to assist people facing foreclosure is to, you know, we don't want to see people lose their homes, we want to assist them. But another angle to this is the loss of property taxes and perhaps fiscal impact on our general fund. Have we done such an analysis as to whether the estimated number of foreclosures and what that would mean to our city's general fund?
At this point, we actually are looking at that, certainly as if a person or homeowner actually goes into foreclosure or in, even in having difficult times actually making their property tax payments, that certainly is going to affect our property tax receipts. We will see the first big payment from the county in December, and at that point in December, late December, early January, we'll have a good sense, well, I should say a better sense as far as what the collection rate will be. As you know, we've budgeted a little over about 95.5% as far as the collection rate, but given all of the issues that are out there, concerns with homeowners, that we think that's going to be dropping, and certainly it's going to affect our property tax receipts for the current year.
So, we would expect a negative impact on our general fund because of the foreclosures?
The potential is there. We did receive some big payments in July and August, we had a carryover payment, but as we go forward and look at the receipts, the payments that we're expecting later in the fiscal year, we do have some concerns.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Weezer, for calling this one special. Can fill in a little bit of that background as well. About six years ago, when I chaired our Housing Community and Economic Development Committee, we held hearings on predatory lending, which was one of the first things that we did and we saw coming down the pipeline, predatory lending practices that were obviously sometimes discriminatory, they were going after folks who couldn't afford homes, they were, you know, making their quick buck on the mortgage and then moving forward. And we actually helped sponsor state legislation around predatory lending that was ultimately thrown out by the courts as unconstitutional, unfortunately. I still believe that it was constitutional, and it was something that could have helped prevent some of the home foreclosure meltdown that we saw. Before the city officially started this program, which we pushed for and I asked the Housing Department to find some monies and worked with the CIO to put out there, we actually started doing this without any money from the city, with Operation Hope, establishing a hotline with the City of Los Angeles two years ago, which has helped hundreds of Angelenos stay in their homes by getting them on the phone with their bank with an assistant volunteer banking advocate, who is a banker who can pick up the phone and actually renegotiate those loans, and hundreds of people have stayed in their homes because of that. This was the next step, to see what the City of LA could do officially. And I want to thank the groups, the nonprofit groups, like the Neighborhood Housing Services, Los Angeles Neighborhood Housing Services and others, that essentially fronted the money because this took us more than a year to get this money out, which is something we need to look out in future years of how we can move this more quickly. I do want to thank our chair, Mr. Wesson, who really helped push this forward as well, and who's been there at the forefront of making sure that we keep as many Angelenos in their homes. But as we look at the 18,000 foreclosures in the LA area, if we can get 1,000 or 1,500 people that are saved, it's certainly a huge help for each one of them, but yet doesn't begin to address the entire foreclosure crisis. As was also mentioned, we went to Washington DC, and the City of LA played a huge role in not only designing the legislation but getting $30 million that will help those foreclosed homes. Those are ones that are already foreclosed, though. $30 million that we can go to get out there and keep that housing affordable, and keep it for lower-income individuals or individuals who otherwise wouldn't be able to get a house. My staff member was there with Congresswoman Maxine Waters, who changed the legislation due to our lobbying on that and got 30 million, so that's for foreclosure after it's happened. And third, as was mentioned, we're looking at what we can do to see if we can't have a moratorium perhaps on evictions for renters, because as was mentioned, Mr. Parks joined me in my district recently, and I joined him earlier in his district, and all council members should be aware of this, there are people who are being evicted from their apartment simply because the apartment changes hands. And if it's a pre-1978 building, that is an illegal eviction. And Countrywide has been caught twice doing this. We've talked to the city attorney, and we're going to be looking at pursuing legal action, but tenants cannot be evicted simply because their owner forecloses their building. They get to stay there, those renters have rights. In the second case, we just found out yesterday that renter was put back in, and basically they're scaring tenants by saying, cash or keys, we'll give you 1,000 bucks or 2,000 bucks, but you have to give us our keys and get out. That is illegal, they do not have to leave. Unless Countrywide is moving in their CEO to live there, and that's a good faith eviction, or if that person hasn't paid the rent, that's a good faith eviction. There is no reason why those folks can get out. So, we're looking at being more aggressive on that as well, Mr. Weezer, and that's something I think that all of us should be looking at. Ask around, ask your tenant groups, see if people are being evicted just because the ownership is changing hands. And Countrywide and other folks, these banks don't even know what they own. They're approaching the Housing Department, asking us, can the Housing Department tell us what we own? Because it's such a mess and it's so chopped up, and it's the tenants that are getting caught in the vice in the middle of that. So, this is a good thing moving forward. It shouldn't have taken this long, but I want to thank the community groups who essentially fronted this money and have been giving this counseling, so it's not just up to 1,000 will happen in the future, it's already been happening, and we've kept hundreds of people in their homes simply because of this program. This will pay those groups and make them whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Before we introduce Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes has an introduction, then we'll go to Mr. Parks and Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise and thank my colleagues for this opportunity to recognize the young people from Sacred Heart Jesus School in Lincoln Heights. Would you please stand and wave to all your friends? Welcome to City Hall. I was sharing them with earlier that this is their house, the taxes paid for this great, great facility and institution, and we are having a very timely discussion about housing and foreclosures, and I'm hoping that you can take back the knowledge you have today to your friends and to your neighbors. I thank my colleagues for indulging me and allowing them to be recognized. Thank you for joining us today in City Hall. Welcome. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I just had one question on this issue, and it appears from reading the material that it's primarily related to homeowners that may lose their residence. What I'm concerned with is that, particularly in my district, we've had many instances where the landlord is going through foreclosure, and then they leave eight in 10 tenants in jeopardy of having a place to stay. Is this service available to people that happen to own multifamily residences or basically living in their own apartment building and providing that service?
From what I understand, the Housing Department, who was here earlier, had addressed that question, indicated that that was a possibility, that owners of multiple-unit dwellings would be eligible.
Okay, you say possibility, or is that a part of the program?
I would need to defer to the department on that. As we discussed it, it seemed that they would be looking at owner-occupied units. We didn't get into the specifics of whether or not that. I know that the main income restriction must still be applicable, low income at or below the 80% area median income, but I was not here to hear the statement from the Housing Department.
Okay. Because I would just like to get that clarified, because even though I think it's great that we help people that may lose their residence, but also I think when somebody's responsible for six and eight residences or five, or multi-generational families are living within some of these buildings, we find that those are also, should be of keen interest to all of us. In fact, we've had an instance recently where I hope part of that education for multifamilies is that we had someone that actually walked away from a building because they owed about $25,000 in utilities, and then another city department came out and cited the building for being uninhabitable because it didn't have utilities. So, the city spent something like $60-some thousand to move these families for a $25,000 water bill. And so, I would hope some of the education for multifamily ownership is part of allowing them to understand what are some of the city programs that do not inhibit or negatively impact their tenants while also maybe losing their particular piece of property. So, I'd hope it's something that is not a possibility, but that we actually make a concerted effort, because if you count the number of units that could be impacted, the multifamily units that we could lose due to foreclosure is greater than the single-family number in total.
We'll get in contact with the Housing Department and have that clarified. As Angelica had mentioned earlier, the restrictions have to do more on the low income, but certainly we'll have that clarified and we'll get back to you very quickly.
Okay, if you do that, plus if the restrictions on income are so low that it would eliminate anybody that would own a commercial piece of property, then we're back to square zero again. But I would hope that we be able to look at those issues, and because we're talking about training and we're not talking about putting money in their pocket, we're talking about keeping them in a position to continue to own the property that they have, and we hope that we not restrict them automatically because they may be in a higher income, because the impact is greater when we lose those multifamily units.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl is next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. These are troubled times, the worst situation any of us know about. Maybe the Great Depression was bigger than this, but we weren't around. This is a big deal, we're worried. I just want to read this, and I want you to explain it to me. The CIO reports that through the foreclosure assistance program, the LANHS, what is that?
The LA Neighborhood Housing Services? That is the name of the lead contractor that was picked for this.
Yeah, who are these people?
I'm just going to refer to the report to find a...
Hold my time, please.
Nonprofit.
This is the nonprofit organization that had competed for this RFP opportunity. The contractor, to give you a little bit of background on them, is a U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and Neighborhood Works American certified nonprofit organization. They've assisted approximately 85,000 families by providing financial literacy, first-time homebuyer education, and foreclosure prevention counseling for this LA County vicinity for over 24 years.
Okay, so they went through a competitive bidding to get this?
Yes, they did.
Okay. Are they here today?
I don't think they are.
Okay, all right. In order to be eligible for the services, individuals and families must reside in the city, be low-income or below 80% of the area median income, and be in default in the foreclosure process, at risk of mortgage default, or delinquent in mortgage payments. Impacted homes must be owner-occupied. Is that the case on all this?
That's correct.
And how will we get the word out to these folks who are in a troubled moment right now?
Well, one of the contract requirements is that this lead agency provide that. That is part of their scope of required services. They also have, one of the attachments to the CIO report included a number of agencies throughout the city that they're working with. These will be subcontractors, they're all locally-based nonprofit organizations who will partner with them to conduct the outreach. From what, I understand from what the department reported, they had an existing HUD grant, a federal grant, that is a countywide grant similar to this one, and that one was approved sometime after the city earmarked these monies for this program. These dollars will be used specifically within the city boundaries, so they already have an infrastructure in place to provide the service countywide. They're going to use these monies to concentrate. So, they are required to customize an outreach and marketing plan that would be specific to the city.
And will that come back to the committee there so that we can feel comfortable they've done a good outreach, that people are aware of this?
To review the marketing and the outreach plan?
Yeah.
I believe it's something the department can bring back to you, we can ask them to, we can let them know that you're interested in reviewing it.
Yeah. Yeah, I want to make that a friendly motion right now, if I could get a second. Mr. Reyes is seconding that motion. The more people know about the program, the more light we shine on it, the more marketing we do of it, obviously, the more people will be impacted in a positive way in these troubled times. So, if we could get that in that and get that word out. I think it's great, I congratulate whoever put this forward. Was that you, Mr. President? Well, thank you for doing this, because this is our effort to try to get into the mix of the situation we're in and do the best we can. So, obviously, it's a great idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Labange is next, and then Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Serano, hi, thank you very much. Has anyone had a face-to-face contact with any banking institutions directly on this issue? How are they handling it? How are they doing it? I know there was some discussion that some of the banks are not talking at all to people and just playing really hardball. If we in the city, has anyone from our staffs in any department had direct contact?
Just Housing Department. Housing Department has.
I think Housing Department has had some conversations with some of the banks. I know we haven't as an office had any contact.
Right. I just wanted to look at...
The city attorney's office has as well.
City's city has as well. I know you championed this at the press conference that you had in your district at Echo Park. I just want to thank you as we move forward. As others have said, this information, we're all a step or two away sometimes from the edge, and many people are at the edge or falling off the edge at this point here, so I think any way the city could help stand, and also if there's a way to, to help make sure if every money does come from Washington, it goes directly to help the people and not the institutions, even though the institutions need to get directly to the people, a little like we saw in Jimmy Stewart in It's a Wonderful Life in 1941 or whatever it was. Thank you to try to help save the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
Thank you, Council President. You know, for the folks who are listening out there, and we use terms sometimes that don't always register for folks who aren't involved in the housing industry, but 80% income, in terms of the area median income, what's the dollar figure so that everyone can hear what that means, so they know they qualify for this program? Do you guys have that number?
You know, I don't have it in front of me. The Housing Department has a chart that they normally provide for illustrative purposes. I'm sorry that I don't have the chart in my packet here.
Well, I have my chart here. What I asked, hoping...
Go ahead, answer your own question, that's good.
So, I want to make sure everyone knows if they qualify or not, so if you're a household size of 80% AMI... So if you're a household size of 80% AMI, for one person, it's 38,000, under 80,000, this is a 2006 income limits. Uh, for a household size of two, 44,350. For a household size of five, it's 59,900. So if you're in that range, you will qualify for this program. It's important that folks understand the type of options they have out there. And when I hear Councilman Garcetti speak to some of the abuses that are going on with folks in the neighborhoods, especially if you're, uh, a frail senior, or if you're a person that doesn't speak English, it's very easy to be intimidated, especially when authority figure comes and tells you, you have to do certain things. So the fact that we have this service, uh, should make a big difference. I believe in my district where, if I remember correctly, close to 300 different units are in foreclosure now. Uh, and it doesn't even include, uh, the multiple-unit facilities, meaning apartments. So I appreciate this work, and we can get it out. In the friendly amendment that was introduced by Council Rosendahl, is it possible to show us in form of a progress report, a map that says, this is who the organization impacted? And kind of have a before and after? This is the situation at that particular moment? And this service comes in after, what, six months or a year? Whatever time, what was the report back time? Did we give them a time, Council Rosendahl?
No.
Can we do, uh, is it a four-month report or six-month report back?
Well, it's, it's a five-month contract.
It's a five-month contract?
It's only five months, so it's going...
I know about this in a couple of weeks, so we can get the word out.
But, okay, I think the outreach, if I would suggest the outreach, the marketing plan would probably be an immediate report back. I don't know if you want it maybe thirty-five months?
It's only five months.
It's only five months, and the reason is that it's the CDVG funds, public services monies. Most of the restrictions come from the source of funds that were carved out for this program.
Wow. So, well, I get, we learn about the marketing in two weeks, maybe a report back on their performance in two months?
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
Thank you. We'll add that. Also, for folks that may be listening that either in the situation of a potential eviction, or also who need help in staying in their home and renegotiating, we can get you the hotline numbers if you call 311. That will put you through to some of these, uh, legal services and neighborhood assistance programs. Call 311 and ask for the Housing Department. We'll put you through either if you're in danger of losing your home and want to renegotiate, or whether, in this case, also if people have illegal evictions. The direct numbers as well for foreclosure, uh, hotline is 213-381-2862. And the Housing Department general hotline, which would help you renegotiate, um, the, um, terms of your loan to stay in your home potentially is 866-566-RENT. 866-566-RENT. Thank you, colleagues, for this discussion. Let's go ahead and vote on the allocation of these monies. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Uh, next item, please.
Item 19 was held on the desk for Councilmember Wesson.
Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President, members. On item 19, I'd like to substitute the, uh, CLA, CLA report on file for the HCD recommendations. That's it.
All right. Without objection, we'll go ahead and take that substitute motion. And if we can open the roll on this, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item called special, please.
Item 21 called special by Councilmember Rosendahl, and an amending motion has been circulated.
Okay. Amending motion, Mr. Rosendahl? Okay. Yeah, without objection, we'll accept that as friendly. And if we can go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Item 23 called special for cars from the public.
Okay, Zuma Dog is our first speaker. Should Zuma Dog, not John Walsh, then I can come forward on item 23. After that will be Barbara Monhan Burke.
This item, I'm going to take one minute. And also, I've gone to First Amendment Coalition to get these illegal, uh, public speaking restrictions taken off us. We did it at the, uh, County Board of Supervisors. Everyone is given three minutes over there now. What we have here is, uh, the market meltdown. If you think that's happening far away, it's happening right here. Because last week, people went to Security Pacific, and it was locked up. Just like in those old 1930's movies, they were out of business. And I blame it on the P-word, all the politicians, from the top to the bottom. This city is in financial chaos. While our mayor, and you never saw him in the same picture with Barack Obama, you will never see them together. Our mayor was in Washington, D.C. That's one minute.
Okay. Our next speaker is Barbara Monhan Burke. Good morning.
Good morning. I just am here on this issue as a representative from the Valley Alliance of Neighborhood Councils, and we certainly support having what you call a collection sheriff. In this particular motion by Grul and Parks, Councilman, uh, people, councilperson Grul and Parks, um, it says possibly an outside collection agency. We would prefer a collection sheriff, because we feel if we do an outside collection agency, it will have a higher percentage, um, which goes to performing the task. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That will close our public comment on that. Why don't, I believe that parts of that are going to be continued. Um, why don't we hold on the desk pending the budget chair's return? If we can go to the next item, please.
Item 27 called special for cars from the public.
Okay. Uh, item 27 is now before us. We have a card from Zuma Dog. Let's see here. Let's see him. So we'll pass that. And if we can, please, open the roll on 27, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Item 27 is approved. Uh, I'd like to record, go back to item 23 and recognize our budget chair. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today is a carryover of an item that we've discussed a few weeks ago that dealt with, uh, some briefings as it relates to the budget, uh, from the state level, the federal level. And now what's left is for us to discuss, or be briefed on, what are some of the, uh, issues that we can go forward on, or find that we can look at revenue-producing type items. And I'd like to ask the CAO and the CLA to come up, uh, to the table. And, uh, before we get into this item, if you could give us a thumbnail, if there's anything new on either the state or federal level, uh, on the whole financial issues, and then we can go into your prepared remarks.
Uh, certainly. Well, very briefly, in terms of the state budget, as you know, they're in, in session now to try to close the gap. It's unclear what's going to come out at the end of that process. There are some discussions of, uh, taking additional money from redevelopment agencies. Um, as you know, there's a proposal for, for a one-and-a-half cent sales tax, um, uh, which, uh, with, with Measure R would be, uh, the, the county tax would be a total of 10.25%, if that were to occur. There is discussion of increasing the vehicle license fee, um, but it's still pretty early in terms of, of getting a good sense of what the, uh, the state is going to do to try to balance their budget. From the federal standpoint, um, we are in the process of identifying infrastructure projects that will be ready to go. Uh, I think the hope and, and desire would be that with a future, um, uh, economic incentive package, that there'll be some money coming to, to move on projects, uh, that are, that are ready to go, and money can be spent immediately.
And this is part of the, what, 700 billion package, or is this something in addition to that?
Uh, my understanding is that, that, no, this would be, this is, these are discussions that are separate and apart from the 700 billion. That is primarily oriented towards, uh, reinitiating the lending process and, and reinvigorating the, the capital markets.
Okay. Ray, you have anything to add?
No, I think Jerry pretty much summed up what's going on right now. There's still a lot of unknowns, and certainly as we get more information, we'll come forward.
Okay. On this item today, is there anything loose ends that we didn't cover from last meeting? Can we go directly into the revenue generating ideas?
Uh, well, very briefly, we actually just passed out, which has, uh, item 23 on it, an updated sheet of, of the material that was presented to you last spring. There really is very little that's left, um, with regard to non-voter-approved revenue sources. Uh, item one is a user fee for traffic enforcement, um, that could generate up to $30 million, but that would be is an increased fine to recover our costs for traffic enforcement. The difficulty with that is that that's going to require, um, negotiations with the county on, on collections of those, as well as, um, the courts have a fair amount of discretion on waiving fees. So it's, it's, uh, it would be difficult to determine what, how much revenue could be generated from that. Uh, we're already moving on number two. We would generate a net of about $400,000 per 100 miles of, um, of additional street, sweeping posting, um, street services in the process of doing that. And number three, again, I don't know how feasible that is, and wouldn't generate a lot of money, but it's essentially an insurance policy for, uh, medical transport. People would pay a monthly fee and then would not be billed if they needed ambulance services. Uh, we're still looking into that. The rest of them really would require voter approval. Um, i-if the council wanted to pursue these, a couple of them could possibly be ready for the May ballot. We have a recovery cost for 911 dispatch operations. The total that, uh, if we were to go cost recovery, we could generate $65 million. Uh, and the concept would be, it would be a, a $2.25 per line per month on the telephone bill that would require voter approval. Another option would be to increase the documentary transfer tax rate. Um, we get $400,000 per $1 of, uh, of increase. We're currently at $11 per thousand, so that's another option that could be looked at. Again, that would require voter approval. That's also a very viable revenue source. Uh, another option is an increase in the TOT rate. We get about $5 million per year, per half percent increase. The city's currently at 14%. Uh, if we went to 14 and a half, we would be amongst the highest in the state. Um, but that could generate, uh, you know, between $5 and $6 million a year. Those are really the most, um, feasible if you wanted to move on something for the May ballot. The others we're continuing to look at, the barrel tax on petroleum, um, would require a vote. Again, um, it could generate up to 1.8 million a year, so it's not a significant revenue source. And that, in summary, is, is, I think, what's, what's left before you. Again, without voter approval, uh, things seem pretty limited today.
One of the things, I think, just, uh, the last couple of days, uh, the state, uh, or the governor was seeking a 9% tax on, uh, dealing with, uh, every barrel of crude oil. Would that preempt us from looking at a similar?
No, I think that would be an additional tax.
Additional tax.
Yeah.
Okay. The, the issue, one of the ones that we've talked about, and it's not on our list, uh, and I hate to say this publicly, because it just gives people, uh, ideas about lawsuits and such, but one of the concerns I have is that we've had such a difficult time in many instances of, of citing, um, the cellular phone sites, uh, and that we've gotten so much community upheaval about them, that, uh, and the zoning administrator's been put through the task of trying to determine whether one fits in a neighborhood or not, that, uh, whether at some point the state is going to preempt our ability to do the citing, much as they've done with the issue of, uh, cable TV. And whether we have the ability, uh, by our own internal zoning, to look at, uh, creating franchises within our major thoroughfares, to use our existing right-of-ways and our existing, uh, light poles and, uh, telephone poles and, and DWP poles, uh, to allow these types of, uh, antennas to be placed on our thoroughfares that would give us considerable amount of coverage, but also would bring revenue into the city if it were localized on those thoroughfares. Is that something that, uh, we could look into as far as, uh, creating those kinds of franchises for revenue for the city?
Uh, sure. We would need to look into that and talk to city attorney and ITA. To my knowledge, there would be nothing preventing the city from franchising placement of cell phone antennas on, on public property. The, the issue of using light poles and, and streetlights, et cetera, um, my understanding is it's been looked at. It's somewhat complicated and it's expensive. So my understanding is that the cell phone providers have not, uh, wanted to go in that direction. They would be small antennas rather than the large tower. Uh, but that's certainly something we can look into.
Okay. Would we have the ability, or would we know now that whether it could be restricted to those thoroughfares as opposed to what we get complaints now, as people want to place them into residential neighborhoods?
Well, I, I think, uh, we'd have to deal with planning on that, but, but I think, you know, the time, place, and manner of restrictions that have been talked about in other contexts, you know, such as billboards, I, I would think that we could develop a process, um, that, that would enable us to objectively evaluate the placement of, of the antennas.
Is that something we can do with ordinances as opposed to going to the public?
Yes, I believe so.
All right. Ray, do you have anything else to add? Okay. Colleagues, what we need is some, uh, general, uh, comments from you as to some of the items that have been listed here, they've been hanging around for a while, as to those that you believe that, uh, because we'd like to send this all back to committee to flush them out, as to those in which the council would feel comfortable moving forward on, uh, so that we can, uh, bring forth a product that, uh, certainly can be discussed, uh, before the full council. But these are the concepts that have come from a variety of members of council, uh, in which, uh, they've given their particular points of view. But again, uh, we would not like to burden either the CAO, CLA, uh, to flush out each and every one of these, if there's no sentiment as relates to, uh, moving forward on them. And so, uh, we wanted to present these as revenue generating ideas. As they broke them down, some of them require a vote of the public, some of them can be done by ordinances, some require some additional research. But I think, uh, as far as, uh, this whole revenue day that started months and months ago at the request of Janice Hahn, I think we've gotten to the point now that, uh, we need some clarity from different members or as a body as to which one of these ideas are the ones that are most viable to move forward on.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas is next.
Thank you. One, one thing that I wanted to, uh, point out, I don't know if staff has had the opportunity to, uh, to realize this, but the financial markets are very, um, volatile right now. But one of the things that, that I found out, and I've confirmed with several firms around the country, small, large, and, and medium firms, is that there's a phenomenon going on right now that, um, like the Department of Water and Power just went out and they did a few hundred million dollars in bonds just last week. Uh, they priced them, they had what they called oversubscription, which is kind of odd, because for the last few months, there have been municipalities around the country, uh, governments that have wanted to go out and sell their bonds, and they couldn't get enough buyers. But there's a phenomenon going on that the city of Los Angeles is benefiting from, and the Department of Water and Power, and our, uh, A, A, various A ratings of our various departments and the city as a whole, is that for those kinds of bonds, there are many buyers. That's what they mean by oversubscription. For example, if they say, "We're going to sell $300 million worth of bonds," which the city of Los Angeles does with our proprietary departments and with the city as a whole, what happens is, what's happening today in the last few weeks, uh, tumultuous market or not, is if they go out to sell $300 million in bonds in ratings that we sell our bonds at, they're getting 3, 4, 5, 600 million dollars in buyers, which means that it's a good thing. That means we can name our price better, and we can get the best price on the market. So I just wanted to remind all of us that fortunately for us, and I want to thank the staff and all of us who've been diligent on this for the last few years, the city of Los Angeles has good ratings, so when we go out for bond sale, we are in the unique upper crust of bonds that we are being oversubscribed. So selling our bonds, we are at a premium right now. And people want to buy Los Angeles bonds, but they might not want to buy the little city of such-and-such in Idaho bonds, and they may go out for a $50 million sale and have no buyers, or only $10 million in buyers. And that's what happens when they pull it from sale and they say, "Oh, my gosh, what are we going to do now?" Thank God the city of Los Angeles is not in that situation again. Thanks to the diligence of everybody so far, we're in good standing, and so far, things look good. And that's a big aspect of what we do in this city on a day-to-day, month-to-month, year-to-year basis. So fortunately for us, yes, the market is, is, is upside down in some ways. It is, it is tumultuous in many ways. Experts who've been around, and I've talked to some of them, been in the business for 30, 40, and 50 years, and they're saying they haven't seen anything like this in the time tenure that they've been working with money, as money managers, et cetera, and things like selling bonds. But that's one of the good, uh, positive things right now, is we're in good situation there. But that's one of the good, positive things right now is we're in good situation there. Any feedback on that?
I think certainly, as you said, you know, city being, you know, double A, we actually are in a very good position. I mean, you mentioned DWP and their recent sale and being oversubscribed. We saw that actually back a couple of months with our convention center. The WITS shocked us. And certainly as we go forward-
But it was a good shock.
Yes, yes, yes. It was a good thing, most certainly. And as we look forward to perhaps doing, we're going to have to convert our MICLCP into long-term debt. We're looking at doing that in the next couple of months. And hopefully the market, and I think it will, would be favorable to us as a city, given our ratings, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Rule is next.
Thank you. And I appreciate, you know, we're always, every week we should try to come up with a new idea about ways in which we can not only increase the revenue or the programs that we have, but also on the cutting side, which I know the CAO, not sure, we don't have the report yet, but is coming out this week on some proposed, oh, almost hot off the press? Okay.
Yes.
If I come by, can I steal it off?
A lot of people want to steal that.
But I think, you know, one of the issues that we talked about before was the alarm fees. And we've talked about, and as one of my constituents here, Barbara Monahan Burke talked about, and the collections sheriff and the others, that there are a couple of items that we haven't seen back. And this is one of them. And I know my staff said we're, city attorneys drafting some of the ordinance, but if we can have the CLA and CAO look at some of those items that we've proposed, adopted, could really see, you know, move forward. Because this one particularly, we know there are people who have alarms and they're not paying their permit fees. And it's really important, and this would allow us to really collect them upfront. So if we can ask, as part of your review of some of the ideas, is to look at those where we've already adopted them and where they are? Because we're getting close to the end of the year and people say, "Well, it's the end of the year, you know, we're going to wait another three months." I don't want to wait another three months to be able to do them, particularly those that we can collect as quickly as possible. Some of the legislative proposals that I know are coming forward in the state are, you're closely monitoring and watching to hold on to our wallets and our pocketbooks to make sure they're not taking some of those funds away. But there may even be some ideas for legislative packages. January, that first month of January is so critical for us to get our ideas forward. So I'd ask as we move ahead to see what other legislative changes we would suggest on the state level that would allow us to better utilize some of the funds. I know one of them is in here, to better utilize the funds that we get, the tickets that we're not getting our fair shares, I would say, up in the state level. So to come back with some of the legislative suggestions so we can act upon them in Mr. Parks' committee prior to the end of the year and be able to give those ideas to some of our state legislators who would understand the importance of cities' revenues and what they can do to help there. Yes, yes.
And is to move this whole item back to budget and finance so that we will not lose track of each and one, every one of these items, and we can make sure that they're scratched off at the committee level to get them back before council.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lavage.
Mr. Miller, how many projects do we have under construction or in the pipeline right now that may be affected by anything like this? Do you know? Who would know? The city engineer?
The actual, not the city engineer, but yeah, I mean, we've got dozens.
Fire stations, police stations. LAX.
Right.
Should have that number. But if something's in the pipeline, under construction now, that has an impact on where we are. And also what is, what is like, if there's dark skies ahead, the tower says, "Stay at the gate." But if you're on the runway or you're flying, he tells you to land safely, usually.
Well, again, for the most part, the projects that are in process are funded. But as I said in the opening remarks, one of the things that we're going to be working with the CAO and with engineering and with all the departments on doing is identifying those projects that are ready to go but are not funded, so that as federal money becomes available, and our hope is it comes directly to cities rather than through the state, that we'll be in a good position to access that money so we can get projects moving, the job creation, the economic development.
Is anybody around who remembers the time? And I remember the time, but I can't remember the actual facts. In the last crisis, when they did have these large federal grants, where we built a lot of recreation buildings, we built a lot of multipurpose buildings. I think you should inquire from someone to just find out some of the status on that, how the money arrived here, how fast it got, put people to work, because there was decisions, I remember very quickly, working for John Ferraro, you had to go out to the community, get consensus on basically a cookie cutter type building that would fit a site to be able to serve a community and keep people, a stimulus package, if you will. So if you look at that.
Sure.
So appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lavage. Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker.
Mr. Lavage, just comment about the bonding thing. Do you have a general sense of how much we're looking at in terms of bonding going forward as a city? I know that we have right now some of the largest public works projects, and when the president-elect talks about economic stimulus packages, we're doing a huge thing at our level. Be it Measure R, which was a county-wide strategy, be it our LAX bonds that we have let out, we're going into, and we announced yesterday, the mayor did it and all that, the venturous architectural designs of the midfield terminal and the Bradley terminal. It's going to be $2 billion just to get that whole project moving, seven altogether. We've got a lot of public works issues out there. We have a lot of bonding mechanisms going forward. And obviously, we wanted some federal matches and we want more support. But do you have any sense that when we do this, how many bonds we have out there right now?
Well, I think as far as what's in the planning stages, certainly we have, you know, the, our ongoing of the program, the CP, you know, as we get up, and these are basically, the CP program, this is for allocation that have already been proved, so it's not really new projects and things of that sort. But that program is $200 million, things that are already in the pipeline. And we're looking at our wastewater, we're going to need to do, go out, it's probably close to $300 million. And we have a solid waste in the works that could be 60 to 70 million as well. I think maybe what you're focused on, I mean, we have what's issues that's going on at LAX, is what's over and above that? The things that I've just mentioned, those have been in the pipeline and we know about them. You know, they're going to create, we have projects, and so they could create some jobs and so forth. But the question is, you know, can we do more?
Right.
And that's, can we get some federal dollars? And I know a couple of the large cities, Philadelphia, Atlanta, and I think, I forget the third city, they were asking the feds, can we bring in, can we borrow money based on the treasury rate and bring in money to either do POBs and pensions things, but also to sort of create some jobs by creating, you know, projects and other public works type things that they would like to do. So I think that's something that we probably as a city need to explore.
What I'd like to do is have a report back to budget and finance, and I'd also like the mayor's team to come out and talk about the federal strategy going forward with the new hope and change in Washington on a lot of the projects we hear locally. The mayor and I have talked about this. I'm thrilled that the president-elect invited our mayor to Chicago. That's a big plus for our great city, and he'll be part of that economic stimulus advisory group, and I know we're going to benefit dramatically from that. But I would like a report back to business, to finance, to budget and finance on that issue, okay? Secondly, I want to talk about the gold in the gutter I've been talking about for the last year, which is meter money. We take in how much, Jerry, on that couple of hundred million?
Parking meter money? No, I believe it's about $24 million in parking.
$24 million. And we've upped the times and we've upped the dollar amount, and how is that coming?
They're in the process of rolling that out. My understanding is that they expect it to be rolled out entirely, I believe, by mid-spring.
By mid-spring?
Right.
Then we'll know, we'll have a better sense of that. I've also been asking, where are the meters throughout the city and where aren't they throughout the city? And I think we need to look at locations for meters, and I look a report back on that and areas that make sense that have no meters, and I think it would be a challenge. Also, I would like to talk about the agency that does the collections. Who's the group that does that for us? I hear they do a great job. Do you know?
Finance. Office of Finance.
Okay. We'd like to report back on how that collection of tickets, you know, the ticket process-
Tickets, okay, so that's DOT.
Yeah, DOT. Do you know how much we take in on that?
Our parking ticket revenue is roughly $134, $136 million for this year.
Yeah. And I'd like to look into that as well. Because obviously, as we get ready for the spring, which will be the budget process again, we need to review where our revenue streams are coming from, you know, what we can do better about it, and obviously, the collections of all of that as well. Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll close our discussion on this. I want to return it to the budget chair for some closing comments. Hopefully that'll give some, idea of some direction, but as this gets taken back, this is clearly, and also for the mayor's office, a time for us to step up and see which of these things we want to move forward on. But appreciate the good, hard work of everybody in looking at a challenging budget year at those cuts and revenue enhancements that are going to be critical for our balanced budget. Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank the CAO has come forward with our second FSR, and I think we have a report coming out this week on additional information about our financial situation. But I'd like to have this whole item moved back to committee, and then we can deal with them item by item and bring them back to the council. We'd ask both the CAO and the CLA to meet with different council member staffs and the council members to talk about what our sense is, is those that are the biggest priorities to move forward on. Because we do not want to expend a lot of energy on things that have no hope of getting through the system. So if we can get some priorities, whether it's those that go before election or those that we can do internally, I think that's where we should put our energies on, and those that have least chance of success, that we put them at the back of the list and we can do it 2011 summer studies or something that we can label them. But Ray, that was a joke. But no, I appreciate your hard work, and we look forward to getting it back to committee, and then we'll just knock off each one of these one at a time, get them before council. And I think we've solved a lot of them with the revenue sheriff, that there's several bites of that apple. And I think one of the reports I saw also from the Department of Finance, we've gotten a pretty good bench on this contingency as relates to the consultants that are in play to research where we are as relates to revenues coming in. And so I think we've satisfied that, but there's some other issues. But we'll deal with them one item by item before the budget and finance committee. So I'd ask that we return it, and then we'll come back with them as they're approved. Let me ask a final thing. We're on the issue of convention center issue, we've proved that, has that been, the ordinance come back on that?
With that policy, there actually isn't, there was not attached ordinance to it. Basically, it's a council policy that-
So policies in play. Now, the last one would be dealing with the special events. And that's in committee? Is that in personnel?
I think that's pending, I think BNF, I think it's pending your committee. The last one, though, has to do with the below-market leases.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And with that, if there's no objection, we'll send that back to committee. Next item, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Dogg, did you still want to speak on this one? You had a card in earlier, we went through the cards. Did you still want to speak on this?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
By the way, thank you so much for noticing. My name's Zuma Dogg, candidate for mayor, mayor09.com, and please, on your way out, consider the fact this is about the economy and the, I'm here to say, I think we need to focus much more on the low end of the economy with the jobs. For example, you have CRA money that's for, to restore blight. Excuse me, if I could please have the attention of council or at least so they can quiet down a little bit.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. For example, you have a CRA money that's supposed to be for restoring blighted communities. Well, what do they do? They take those billions of dollars and they give it to the Grand Avenue Project, Related Corporation, Arab Emirates of Dubai, billion-dollar developers for a billion-dollar project downtown at the totally wrong time that they can't get off the ground. And I say that you should be focusing much more on the moms and pops. We need to start from the bottom up, from the lowest income people. We have gang, the gang violence coming up. There's a lot of people that we need to take at the lowest level and create jobs for these people. You know that I blogged about it, and I'll speak to council specifically about these ideas. So again, we need to focus much, okay, and also with the housing, okay, you're going to have much less money coming, and the city's in much bigger trouble. The stock market's going much further down. All you did was build high-income housing. You say, "We need housing." You didn't build any affordable housing. You didn't build any workforce housing. You built all upscale, million-dollar luxury housing, and nobody can afford it, and it's sitting vacant, plummeting in value, much less money in revenue for the city. And so you haven't focused on any, so then people can't live here, they have to live on the outskirts, less revenue coming into the city. And then you say, "Well, gee, we don't have any affordable housing." Then you go to voters and you raise their taxes and new bonds and fees to pay for all the things that you wasted the money in the first place for. So I'm here to say you really better buckle down because there's no more time for fraud, waste, abuse, and corruption in these economic times, and zuma dog for mayor.com.
I'll close our comments on that item. If we can send that item back to committee, to the budget and finance committee. Next item called special, please.
Item 28, call special for cards.
Mr. Dogg, on item 28, would you like to come forward?
Yes, and I'd like to take one minute because this sort of ties in, everything ties in under this financial crisis. This is about money that's going to be awarded, it's going to be awarded, funding levels awarded to the city of Los Angeles County Probation Department. So here we have an example. This is what I talk about as I've been on the streets, getting signatures as I'm running for mayor. They ask me, "Gee, well, what's your number one thing?" I'm here to say, "It's when this type of money is awarded to the city for programs." Will they set up these cahoots, racketeering, shady, crony nonprofits that are totally shills to funnel the money in? It doesn't make it to the community. And I'm here to say, as mayor, the first thing I will do is call for audits. Now, I want the city right now to say, "We're going to put this on hold before we give money to people in the city, these nonprofits. We're going to audit and make sure that these are legitimate nonprofits and that the money's going to be used for the community because we're under such crisis in the community." And guess which communities are going to fall into the disrepair quickest, none of these economic hardships? It's not going to be the rich folks that have the money that you want to put mansion luxury taxes on. It's going to be the lowest of economic communities that are the hardest hit already. These are the ones that's going to be hell-break-loose-on-the-street scenario. And so we need to make sure that this money that's awarded to the city for juveniles, for probation, that this goes directly to the community. I would prefer, what you should do is just write checks and send them directly out like a fiscal stimulus package. Because if you want to know the quickest way to make money disappear, forget David Copperfield and making the Statue of Liberty disappear. If you want to make federal and state money that's supposed to go for these nonprofits disappear, give them to city council and let them give them to nonprofits. There's no accountability, no transparency, no receipts. Mercedes ends up getting bought, wave runners end up getting bought. People end up living like fat cats on the high hog. I want the money directly into the community that this is awarded to, and I want audits. And I think you should just send the money directly to people because it disappears when your hands get on it.
I'll close our comments on that item. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 30, call special for cards.
Okay, our first speaker is Zuma Dogg.
Oh, yes.
One minute, and then Daniel Wright will be next after that.
Let's talk about the CRA, community robbing a-holes. And let me just tell you something, this is something people don't know about the CRA. It's money that's supposed to be used to redevelop the community for blight, for blight, for blight, not for Grand Avenue Project, billion-dollar luxury skyscrapers, and this specific one. And I hope the council president, Eric Garcetti, is paying attention. What they're doing now is taking money for redeveloping the community, $3.6 million, and it's going to be used for litigation because this project's getting sued because it's way too big. You're talking a skyscraper in a little community, residential, totally inappropriate. So of course they're getting sued. So now they're taking this money that is, I saw the agenda item, it can, it can be used for litigation. That's what this is about. The project's so shady, of course they're getting sued, and now they're taking CRA money to defend it. What a disgrace!
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daniel Wright. After that will be Doug Haynes.
Good day, Daniel Wright, 215 North Marengo Avenue, Pasadena, 911001. On behalf of the La Mirada Neighborhood Association of Hollywood, number one, we object to the prejudicial lack of notice of the CRA's board's consideration of this item. La Mirada has submitted requests to receive notice of all the proposed actions on this project, and La Mirada received no notice or had any opportunity to participate at the CRA level. Number two, the statement of overriding considerations significantly relies upon the creation of workforce condominium housing as justification for imposing significant negative impacts on the community. The staff report now reports that the housing has changed from workforce condos to run-of-the-mill apartments with grossly inadequate parking. Therefore, the statement lacks an adequate factual predicate to justify the findings of overriding consideration in violation of SEQA. The city and the- The city and the CRA has failed to comply with CEQA requirement that the project have a finite project description. This significant change is, to the character of the residential component, has not been assessed by the CRA in an addendum. We contend that the major changes to the project are so significant that it now requires recirculation of the EIR, reconsideration of the mitigation measures, and reassessment of the factual basis for the statement of overriding considerations. Please, Councilmembers, locate project risk and collateral risk sections on Page 6 of the CRA report. In plain sight, it says that if you make this loan of 3.7 million to subsidize the developer's litigation costs against the community, you will have a high risk of losing all the money. You are second in line, and your staff report acknowledges that the developer's primary loan is 86% of loan value. Finally, this is an unconstitutional gift of public funds and also a waste of taxpayer funds in violation of Civil Code Section 526A. Also, staff has also disclosed to you that the actual value of the property has been given to Hezer Marston. It is not disclosed in your tax, in your report, so you don't even know the value of the property that you are secured with this loan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Doug Haynes. After that is John Walsh. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. My name's Doug Haynes, the La Marada Neighborhood Association, and we're currently litigating the city over this development. Let the record reflect that I'm turning in four separate items of CEQA arguments to the city, including our current litigation, which is case number BS 116355, a three-page letter by former zoning administrator John Pareko, 65-page May 29 appeal of the city planning commission's actions on this matter, and a 124-page August 5 appeal of the advisory agency's approval on this matter. I ask each of the city councilmembers to understand exactly what you're voting on today. This proposed action will provide a private developer with 3.7 million dollars almost in public funds that was supposed to pay for a public park. It is now going to be given away to include covering the private developer's legal expenses to fight us. A neighborhood association of low-income constituents of CD 13 in our litigation against this illegal development that would place a 260-foot-tall skyscraper where the zoning allows a building height of 45 feet with twice the allowed residential density and almost half the required parking. The millions you are providing this developer to fight your own constituents is being provided in a time of a citywide fiscal crisis with no interest or principal due by the developer for two years. In other words, a sweetheart deal. The Community Redevelopment Agency report on this project states, quote, "The project's risk is significant, given the residential and financial market conditions. The borrower is currently renegotiating the 17.5 million-dollar senior loan, which is being provided by the CRA, and the construction loan is not yet secured." In other words, he is not able to get private financing for this development. The status of the residential market is uncertain, given the project has not yet, has, excuse me, residential units' market demand may decrease significantly if the economy continues to deteriorate. You're putting money into a project that is going to fail, our tax dollars, and we are suing you against our, we're suing our own representative who isn't representing us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Walsh. After that is Brent Galke.
Echo the past two speakers. I've lived in Hollywood since 1976. I want people to realize what we're talking about here. We're talking about the spaghetti factory, which before that was a radio studio, KMPC, Dr. Christian, all the old-time radio shows. They came in, you didn't see any stories in the LA Times when they closed down the spaghetti factory, all known throughout the county. So what's happening now? There's no loan. The CRA has never collected on a defaulted loan in its history in Los Angeles, 8 to 10 to 14 million dollars. They are handing money over to developers. And this is exactly what is happening all over Hollywood. Come to Hollywood and Vine and look at our latest vacant lot. There's blight that, we now call this area Hollywood and Vine, the historic Universal Building. CRA is a causer of blight and not a creator of non-blight. In fact, we have decided to name these vacant lots that the CRA created. So, and the parking structure they're going to build in Hollywood and Vine after they tore it down, and they'll tear down everything over at the spaghetti factory site. Hollywood and Vine is now the O.J. Simpson, Gil Garcetti parking structure. We invite you, Councilman President Garcetti, and your father to come out and break a bottle of champagne on the rubble. So I think it's fitting for your father to be named after something that was totally destroyed, such as his political career. And I want to finish by saying...
The speaker's comments have gotten into the personalities, and he should speak to the council as a whole.
[inaudible]
Thank you very much.
[inaudible]
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, and thank you for the invitation. Brent Galke will be our next speaker.
Good morning, Council President, Councilmembers. My name is Brent Galke. I'm with Gerting Needham Development, affiliate of Sunset and Gordon Investors. As you know, Sunset and Gordon stands to be a catalytic product for Hollywood and delivering on numerous public benefits, including workforce housing, including a local hire program for the workers, prevailing wage jobs for all construction workers, designing the building to lead gold standard in energy conservation, and building a public park. This project also has broad community support. It's been before you before, including Council District 13, the Mayor's Office, and Hollywood Chamber, as well as many of the local unions. I urge you today to support this CRA loan, and I reiterate, it's a loan, which was unanimously approved by the CRA Board just earlier this month. CRA loan is secured by a second position behind 16.5 million, is well within the typical underwriting guidelines for loan-to-value calculations regarding risk. This action helps cement our public-private partnership, and will help the project move forward. So thank you again.
Thank you very much. To call on Councilmember Eric Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Do I have staff come forward from the CRA on this? Staff from the CRA here, come forward. Do we have any staff members here? Can we hold this on the desk until we have staff? Thank you.
Thank you. Hold this on the desk. Next item, Madam?
Item 33, called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine, item number 33.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Zine.
Could the DOT folks come forward, please? The DOT Deputy Chief. The new DOT Deputy Chief. Congratulations.
A wonderful DOT.
It's a wonderful DOT Deputy Chief. Thank you. The motion calls for, now let me explain how it started. One of my constituents had friends over last Thanksgiving on De Soto Avenue, which is an anti-grid lock zone. Cars were cited and towed away on Thanksgiving. So we thought it'd be wonderful, because of the Thanksgiving holiday, the Christmas holiday, and New Year's, that we would relax that, since there's not a lot of traffic in those areas where we have the gridlock. And the policy of DOT, if you can explain it, so the residents of Los Angeles that live in congested areas where they have a number of these gridlock zones, heavy fines, impounded the cars, what our policy is with DOT and the policy with the police department. So if they're going to invite friends over, do they have to park blocks away and walk in, or can they park in those zones? And what is the policy when it comes to the restricted zones, mostly in the afternoon, the 4 to 7, where you've got the no-stopping, anti-grid lock in a residential area where there's single-family residents or apartments, and folks living that want to invite friends over for a holiday dinner? If you could take it away.
Okay. My name is Christine Motta. I'm with L A DOT, and our policy is, on the holidays, particularly Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's, is we do not enforce any of the peak-hour zones. We enforce on holidays what we like to consider the red, white, and blue, so we enforce red zones, white zones, handicap zones, and other safety violations.
So an area like De Soto, which is a major route between the 101 and the 118, heavy residential area, some businesses, no stopping during that afternoon hour, that will not be enforced. And how do the people know, for example, Wilshire Boulevard or some of your, if it says no stopping any time, then there's no exception for that?
Right. If it's no stopping any time, there's no exception, but if it's no stopping during certain posted time limits, then we will not enforce it.
Okay. And then how do we notify the LAPD? Because this particular situation, I didn't ask the constituent if it was DOT or LAPD, just that they were cited and their friend's cars were impounded and cited. So I don't know if it was you folks or LAPD. One of the agencies did it. How do we then have LAPD follow the same policy?
We have been in contact with LAPD and let them know what our policy is regarding enforcement, so they're aware also.
So citywide, when residents are having friends over throughout the City of LA, if there's a no-stopping area with a gridlock or a no-stopping which is between certain hours, they can feel welcome to invite their friends. They can stop in those areas. We're not going to mask the signs, but they can come and enjoy the holiday dinner, and then the next day, we go back into the normal operation.
Correct.
But so it's Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's.
Correct. And they can also go onto our website and hazard all the holidays and what we do and do not enforce on each holiday.
Okay, and that's...
The L A DOT website.
And is it, what's the website? I know there's WW.LACity.org.
Slash L A DOT, I believe.
Slash L A DOT. Wendy Grohl, I'm sure you know that one. So, okay, so the people of Los Angeles can now feel comfortable inviting guests over, not worried about feeding them, and then having to take them to the toll lot to get their car out of hog?
Yes, they'll be okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we request that this comply with, between DOT and LAPD, so our residents can enjoy the holiday season.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. I was glad to second that motion. We now have Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President and Chair of Transportation. I just want to be sure about Sepovita Boulevard in Westchester, Abbott Kenny Boulevard in Venice. These are two big areas, and also San Vicente up in the Brentwood area. How will you be relaxing in those three areas, these parking issues?
If it is posted with the no parking with the time limit, we have instructed, we have instructed all officers not to enforce. That's been our policy for several years.
Have we looked into the 11th District in all of my areas where it's a robust opportunity for people in the holiday season? I have it in Brentwood. I have it in the Palisades. I have it in Venice. I have it in Westchester. I have it in Mar Vista, Del Rey Palms, and Playa Del Rey. Those areas, have we looked at them all?
Yes.
Okay. And when will we announce specifically what streets and when?
Well, and regarding enforcement on the specific holidays, we will not enforce.
Okay. What I like is this, if I could, I have eight active neighborhood councils. If you could get to my office specifically in my eight areas where my neighborhood councils are, and I will give the word to my neighborhood councils, who will get it out to all the community.
Okay, we will do that.
Great. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And I do think it's important, now this is peak-hour restricted parking, the 7 to 9, 4 to 7 p.m., where we have our anti-grid lock zones.
Correct.
Other parking violations and things will still be during that time period.
Right. We also, we don't do meters on the holidays either.
Okay, so no meters and no peak-hour restricted parking will be enforced on those three holidays.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Seeing no one else on the queue, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Ten eyes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, Mr. Zuma Dogg, who has reached his items, can we just, if we, okay, can you hold on one second? We'll do these, okay. So if we can, on items 40, 42, 43, 40, and 45, will now be before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Ten eyes. Thank you. Those items will be approved. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. There's one question that I had that has been answered. Sorry, the CRA staff is not here today. And I want to just lay out a couple of things about the project, and I know this has come up in earlier public comments about historical facades and preserving that. For the record, the, worked very closely, actually, with Hollywood Heritage and others on this to make sure, appreciated the developer stepping forward. They took the initiative. I'm not claiming credit myself, though I was certainly involved after they initiated those discussions, to keep the historical piece of that important structure. And the project is actually built around that at not an insignificant cost, and we appreciated that. And it was one of the ways, along Sunset Boulevard, along with the Palladium recently, which there are certain things that people have asked to tear down, to cut down, and I think the community and the historical community has spoken very clearly that that's not acceptable. This wasn't an issue in this case, but I wanted to establish that for the record, because the developer has kept that in place. What this project is here is a number of things. One, it's an expansion of green space in Hollywood, which is one of the park-porest areas in the city, that we've moved from 13 parks to nearly 35 parks, and we're working on two more in the area, not least of which is, of course, the large Hollywood Freeway Cat Park, which would be down the street from here and more of a regional park, but this would be kind of one of those neighborhood-serving parks that is very important to the growth of Hollywood and to ensure that people have that balance of healthy lives as well as that jobs-housing balance. Secondly, this avoids the mistake that we've seen in other communities, where we put too much housing or too many jobs, and actually insisted, and the CRA got involved in negotiating, insisting there be some commercial space as well as retail space, so that there's jobs and housing together here. We've seen the West Side, where there's five jobs for every unit of housing. There's too little housing and too many jobs there. We've seen other communities in which, like Santa Clarita, where there's dozens of housing units for every job. This is what causes the traffic in our region. In the center of our city, if we can balance those two, that is a positive thing moving forward. We also know the CRA worked through to make sure that there was a restriction on some of the income for some of the units. I hope nobody is offering that residential, whether it's for sale or tenants or owners, are different sorts of people. I believe that those people who are tenants are not only just as strong in their communities and believe just as much in their communities as homeowners, and vice versa, that people, whether they are renting or whether they are owning, and certainly, we're seeing that throughout downtown and other places in the market, that condominiums are not penciling out, but the need for housing is no less. In fact, in the rental market, because of foreclosures, many people have flooded into the rental market, and there simply is not enough in that. So that was an acceptable change for me in looking at the CRA negotiations that happened there as well. The office component we spoke about, and the retail on the streets was very important to me, too, because when we have empty streetscapes, and we did a great walk of Hollywood with about 200 different residents of Hollywood, where we went block by block, the Great Hollywood Walkabout, and actually measured sidewalks, and looked at the street trees, and figured out, what do we need? And one of the things that came back time and time again was more retail there on the street. Right now, this is a vacant lot. Right now, this is something that, if this doesn't happen, it's not my belief that something else will come in very quickly, and that's what we have to be very aware of, too, that anybody looking to stop that, that certainly, there's not going to be some great project that rushes in in the meantime, especially in these tough economic times. Now, projects throughout the city may or may not happen, but it is our due diligence to do the best to try to make them occur at a time when this would create jobs, give some housing that would be for folks that are not high-income and luxury, to create increase in green space, and to move forward with that. I know we're in litigation, and I respect that very much, and I know each comment that I'm making, there's probably a very good rejoinder from your perspective, and I respect that as well. But I do think on balance that this is something very important for us to do. I've known Mr. Wright for some time and respect his activism in the community, and we've worked very closely also on a number of non-development issues, where I know we've sometimes been at other ends with Mr. Haynes. The point of this project, though, is that this is a moment which we can in Hollywood, that area between the freeway, where we have a new school that's been built, and Sunset and Vine. Fill in that space and make it one of the most vibrant, exciting areas, and that is local tax dollars being spent locally. Redevelopment Agency has been a mess in its past, and I think that it has moved pretty dramatically into a future in which we do have a jobs-housing balance, and we are looking dramatically into a future in which we do have a jobs-housing balance, and we are looking at green space, where the community is often directly negotiating, and I know that the lawsuit continues here, but the Studio District Neighborhood Council and others who wanted to push for parking, and I agreed with the community that the parking wasn't enough, and we pushed that one place, and we've pushed it again towards the full code parking now, which is something I'll do whether there's a lawsuit or not, because I think it's the right thing to do, that we now have a project that on paper is one of the more dynamic projects we've seen. It's lead gold, or lead silver to lead gold, which means it's built in an environmental way. We can look back at what we've stopped in life, and we can also look forward to see what we have done. Whenever we'll have a hundred percent happiness across the board, I'm not a hundred percent happy with any project that moves forward, but this is one which we can be proud to move forward, and this allows us to continue. And I hope if I can play constructive role in any way, and I put this offer again forward, I know I spoke to Mr. Haynes about it before, but if I can play a constructive role, Mr. Wright, in all and resolving this, please let me know. I'm happy to do that. I know we may not be able to get there, but I do think in the past we've been able to do that with some very big projects like Hollywood and Vine, and that offer is still out there. But in the meantime, I would ask for your vote and to move forward today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. You are the last speaker on the queue. Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Ten eyes.
Thank you. That'll go forthwith. Next item, I believe, is item thirty-five, Mr. Clerk.
Item thirty-five, call special for cards.
Yes, Mr. Walsh. It'll be followed by Donna Pearman and Miriam Fogler in the San Fernando Valley.
Incidentally, you know, I have a regular job for the last quarter of a century at LAUSD, as Mr. Zion tells you, so I'm not here every month, I'm not here every week, I'm not here for fun. I only come when it's special. Two hundred thousand dollars. They never add up how much the special events accumulate. It's two hundred thousand. My favorite one, don't expect to see this in the press, my favorite one is for Madonna. We are giving Madonna, and she needs money, the way I need another haircut, Madonna gets six thousand dollars. That's, that's letter K. Reyes and Perry. What is this? This is, we talk about the poor people, we talk about the homeless, and now we're dealing with someone, and I won't use the B-word, someone who doesn't deserve anything, declaring the Madonna concert, which happened a month ago, or a couple of weeks ago, a special event, fees and costs absorbed by the city. People are eating garbage in the streets. Homeless people are being burned to death by gangs for sport, and you're giving Madonna six thousand dollars. And on Hollywood and Santa Claus Parade, I'd just like to point out, this will be the first Santa Claus Parade, Mr. Garcetti, where they will pass on the northwest corner of Hollywood and Vine, rubble, rubble from an historic building, and he can talk about how the developers have promised, the developers have promised nothing. Go out to the Blue Building at Hollywood and Vine, take a look. Garcetti promised to save that building. He had a big press conference, and the LA Times came on their knees. Go out and look now. Who's the liar? Ninety percent of the building has been destroyed at Hollywood and Vine. It's down, and the Times doesn't have the guts to talk about it. You all make me sick to my stomach.
Thank you very much. I understand Ms. Fogler and Ms. Pearman have left the San Fernando Valley, so that item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Ten eyes.
Next item?
Item thirty-eight, call special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Yes, we have a public speaker, yes, Mr. Reyes?
Yes, Councilmember Grul, I was slow to the trigger here, but wanted to receive and file thirty-five K if possible.
You want to receive and file thirty-five?
Thirty-five K.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if we could reconsider item thirty-five. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. And you want to receive and file--
Ten eyes.
Thirty-five K.
The amendment to that will be to receive and file thirty-five K. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Ten eyes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, I know you called item forty-six special, we do have one card before we go to that item. Mr. Walsh?
Madam President, you're on item thirty-eight right now.
Oh, I'm sorry, thirty-eight. But, okay, and did anyone call item forty-six, before we go to thirty-eight, item forty-six was just for card, Mr. Walsh has actually, Mr. Walsh, you have used all of your time today?
[inaudible]
Is that, I'll ask, I'll ask, Dion? I'll ask, I'll ask the city attorney. Okay. Okay. All right, then we, excuse me, Mr. Walsh, please. What we would do is go to item thirty-eight, the city attorney's indicated a one-minute for item forty-six when we get to that item. Mr. Rosendahl, you called item thirty-eight special.
Yeah, we're looking, it's about tsunami signs, and we're waiting for Jim Featherstone, who's to be here to discuss this with me. I have a sense, we need to put it on the desk until he shows up. It has to do with when these signs are going to be installed in Venice Beach. We've been screaming at it for a couple of years, and how many signs, and where are the locations, and what public outreach they're going to do.
Mr. Rosendahl, this, the other item is going to be our last item on the agenda. Would you like to continue this until tomorrow?
Well, I don't, and I've asked him to be here for two hours now, so I'd like an answer on this.
And who are you, I'm sorry, I didn't hear who you were asking for.
Featherstone.
Okay, Mr. Featherstone.
Emergency preparedness.
Okay. Well, we'll go back to items, we'll hold this on the desk, we'll ask for item forty-six, and make a determination after that. Item forty-six, Mr. John Walsh.
This is a separate meeting, this is a special meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, the five hundred homes that were destroyed, this is about local emergency, politicians, that was a land-use decision. It was insane to put that many homes together like that. Why? Because in LA, land use rules. They can show you five hundred pages of why those five hundred homes wouldn't have been destroyed, they were destroyed, and every politician who's involved in land use is responsible for that. Now we're going to have new rules about the homes not being that close together, fine, and I'd like to take everything I said about the city council back, especially, Mr. Reyes, because I just saved the taxpayers six thousand dollars that would have gone--
He's not speaking on the topic.
--into the pockets of Madonna.
Yeah, the item, we are in the welfare. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, this item is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Ten eyes.
Thank you. Forthwith, Ms. Rosendahl, that is our last item.
Yeah, Mr. Featherstone is en route, he's coming out of the elevator.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other items we need to consider, Mr. Clerk?
A council has motions for posting a referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Alacon requests to be excused December 2nd, and for the entire meetings of January thirteenth, fourteenth, and sixteenth of next year, all for city business, and those meet council policy.
Thank you, those will be adopted.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused January sixteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first for personal business, that meets council policy.
He'll be excused.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused December tenth, twelfth, sixteenth, seventeenth for city business, that meets council policy.
He'll be excused.
Councilmember Labange requests to be excused to arrive at eleven-thirty on December seventeenth for city business, that meets council policy.
He'll be excused.
Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused December ninth and tenth, January twentieth and twenty-first, and to leave at eleven on January twenty-third, all for city business, they meet council policy.
Be excused.
And Councilmember Perry requests to be excused to arrive at noon on December 2nd for personal business, that also meets council policy.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That would leave just item thirty-eight.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam President, and colleagues, I appreciate indulging your moment, waiting a second or two, and putting it on the desk so we could have this discussion. Come on up to the center, my friend. Good morning.
Morning.
If we could, you know, we have fires, and the mayor's been an incredible leader in the last few days. We've seen his leadership out there. We had a fire in my district the other day, I was out there at two-thirty in the morning as it was going up the hill there, and we were worried about Mountain Gate and Bundy Canyon and Mandeville Canyon and Mount St. Mary's. And again, the fire coordination with everybody was fantastic. Last Thursday, we had the great shakeout, and in my Mar Vista district, we had a couple of hundred people up on top of the Rose Park up there with flashlights, discussing what we would do if we had an earthquake. Now I have my Venice Beach. About two years ago, we held in Venice Beach, in Venice, a discussion about tsunamis. We've been told that there is a plate shift outside of Catalina, that nobody knew about ten years ago, that could rupture, and we could have a tsunami going on Venice. We've also been told, and I don't know if it's true or not, I guess nobody knows what they're talking about, that it would only be six or eight feet, because it's a shallow kind of bay, and it would wobble like this and not be like we saw, God forbid, what happened in Thailand and other places in the Far East. All right, but we know we have the potential of a tsunami. What have we done about that as an issue?
What we've done-- Good morning, Jim Featherstone, General Manager, Emergency Management Department. Good morning, Councilmember and other Councilmembers. What we've done is we've done a series of studies and surveys to look at the potential for tsunami-type event here in Los Angeles. We've looked at inundation zones. We've also worked really hard to make Los Angeles a tsunami-safe city. A lot of it has to do with education and awareness of the community, plan, tsunami emergency plans, and also the posting of signage throughout the inundation areas to show people safe routes out of the area.
Okay, when we discussed that, we created a map with a diagram that showed areas in red.
Yes, sir. And the areas that we were, we were concerned with all areas, but of specific note was the San Pedro area and the Venice area.
And in the Venice area, we're talking about west of Lincoln, basically?
Yes, sir, it's pretty frightening.
And when you look at that red area there, which goes into my canals, it goes into Venice Beach--
Yes, sir.
--and moves along, can we republish that again and get that in the hands of everybody who lives there so they could see where there potentially could be an--
Absolutely, we can do a mailer and/or distributed at community events.
Okay, I would like you to print up as many as you can, I want to personally give them to the Venice Neighborhood Council, I want to give it to other groups in Venice that really have been asking me for that.
Yes, sir.
If we could get that right away. Now, what is our sensing of timing? Obviously, we're funding today the actual installation of these signs. Have they been made?
There are a hundred and sixty signs on pallets at the installer now. The installer needs a purchase order, that's it, and it'll take him approximately a week to install the sign.
So can I have a commitment out of you that by December the first, they will be up throughout the district? That's two weeks from now, roughly?
Depends on the movement of the money. If we, if the money were in my hand today, I would commit to you seven days from today.
Okay, great. Well, then I'm going to ask my colleagues to vote unanimously, and we'll do a forthwith on it, and that will move it real quickly. Okay, so in seven days, and we've identified all the locations?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I want you to get ahold of Jim Smith from the Venice Beach head, and I want you to give him the story of how we're doing it, since he's the one who made quite a lot of community concern, and rightly so, about this issue.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Last question is, do we have any sense from people who understand these tsunamis, if I was right, that at six or eight feet, we would see, or it could be fifty feet? Do we have any sense on that?
We don't, we have, we have a sense of it, we don't have the hard scientific data like we based the shakeout on, but we have enough of a sense that it's a very serious concern for us.
Okay, we'd like to report back on that, because some of the discussions that we had in the community meeting said that if a building is like a twenty-story structure, you could go up above the seventh floor and you'd be okay. We want to know if we can get a better sense of that, because I don't want panic if we get to that moment, God forbid it never happens, but I want more clarity, if we can get more clarity in what the potential might be with those plates.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you so much for your discussion, and colleagues, I'd like an eye vote on this.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, next speaker.
Hannah, Mr. Featherstone, thank you. Just, I know my colleague, Ms. Hahn's very interested in this as well. What are you doing for her coastal region?
Fortunately, for Ms. Hahn's district, the port has played a big role in there, and the port has a different funding stream, so they were able to actually get their signage up and move further along--
It's completed. Also, does the continental shelf have anything to do with whether the tsunami, how it hits, if it does hit, and the fact that it is very deep off California compared to some other parts of the world where the shelf isn't as deep? In your, yeah, you probably have much oceanography as I do, I know how to spell it.
Firefighters.
I know that.
But, no, but we're actually going to, we're consulting with Dr. Lucy Jones as to the geological impact of the continental shelf on the Pacific Coast.
And also just suggest too, in the county area too, which has the marina and up the creek, Balona Creek. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you. Okay.
All right, with that, that will close our discussion on this item. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
As approved, thank you. We'll send that forthwith without objection. Thank you very much. We've already done housekeeping, so now is time for any business announcements. If there are not any, let's go ahead to adjourning motions. If people can please rise in council chambers for our adjourning motions, thank you. Mr. Cardenas? If I can ask everybody in chambers, please, to rise for, out of respect, for our adjourning motion. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you. It's with great sadness I make the announcement that one of our city attorneys, Richard Bob, passed away over the weekend from a sudden heart attack. Richard Bob joined the office of the city attorney in nineteen eighty-four after receiving his undergraduate degree from UCLA and his law degree from the University of Southern California. During his twenty-five-year career of service to the city of Los Angeles, Richard worked under the Bradley, Reardon, Hahn, and Biarrogosa administration. During his tenure, he worked as a deputy at Hill Street Workers' Compensation, Civil Liberty, Civil Liability, Housing Enforcement, and most recently in the Economic Development Division. Up until his passing, Richard Bob worked with the council and the mayor's office on the release of the gang intervention and prevention procurement process. Richard worked during his free time on the weekends to ensure the process is fair and transparent. In addition, he worked within the greater community to address concerns regarding the procurement process for these services. He is one of the few dedicated city attorneys who would spend his personal time to ensure that the procurement process was underway, and I've personally witnessed his commitment in working with him directly. Throughout the years, Richard earned the respect and admiration of those he worked with as well as the clients he worked for. His integrity and dedication served as an example to us all. Our prayers are with the city attorney's office and his family. The funeral services are pending. He's survived by his father, his sister, and his brother. I just met with Richard Bob just a couple of weeks ago, and even though we were having some discussions that were not heated, but there were discussions where him and I were disagreeing and getting into the minutia of the details, he was always a professional about it, he never took it personal, and he was always looking for what was best for the city of Los Angeles. So I can personally say that he was a fine gentleman and a consummate professional, and we're going to miss him dearly.
Just like to add my good wishes as well to his family, and thank you for doing that. We worked together very closely when I was at Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee, and he worked on some of the issues we talked about here today, predatory lending and other stuff, and was a fine lawyer and a fine man. On this, Ms. Grul and Mr. Labange? On this, okay, Mr. Labange on this one?
I would ask all members on--
Absolutely, we'll do all members, Mr. Reyes.
I just wanted to also offer my condolences. Over the years, I had the opportunity to work with Richard Bob, and he was instrumental in many of the issues that we dealt with in my district. He was one of the few gentlemen who would actually call you back right away and tend to the issue and push it. Sometimes you get responses like, well, we'll get to it next week, I have a, you know, I can't get to it right now. He was immediate, and he was very professional. We will miss him. We will miss him.
Thank you. Ms. Grul.
Thank you very much. I'd like us to adjourn in the memory of W. Joe King, who passed away unexpectedly on November eleventh, two thousand and eight. He was the director of Contract Services at Access Services. He was really an instrumental part of the Access family for many years, and his leadership was crucial to their operations, and really his positive and influences permeated Access Services and will for years to come. He first became associated with Access Service as a member of ACIS, ASI, excuse me, Community Advisory Committee, and in nineteen ninety-eight, Access was fortunate enough to have Joe join their staff ranks as a consumer advocate. He has left an indelible mark on many different facets of Access Services, but eligibility is arguably his greatest accomplishment. Joe was recognized as a national leader in the field of eligibility. He assisted in the development of best practices for the Federal Transit Administration, Easter Seals Project Action, the Transportation and Research Board, and many, many other agencies. He believed that there was a direct correlation between one's ability to live on an equal playing field and one's individual sense of dignity and self-worth. Through Access Services, Joe constantly empowered the disability community to survive and to thrive rather than just exist. Our thoughts and deepest prayers and sympathy go out to Joe's family and friends. He is survived by his wife Kathy, his son John, and his daughters Katie and Becky Jo, and as we adjourn in his memory.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labons?
Yeah, Mr. Parks and I would like to do this. Members, I hope you knew that our dear Jackie Tatum passed on the 7th of November. She battled with cancer. She was a great general manager for Recreation and Parks, tapped to lead the department in the 1992, and she was a great inspiration. I first met her when she was a central area supervisor for Recreation and Parks, and everyone knew Jackie Tatum. She was recreation first. She had many ideas to develop the Lotus Festival, the Festival of the Black, the International Family Festival, which I think is out in Westchester. She developed all these community festivals to bring people, families, to our park system. She died at St. John's Hospital. She is much loved. She's survived by her daughter and her son, as well as her half-sister, Jackie Tatum. A wonderful woman, a graduate of USC, a great first African-American woman to be appointed general manager in Recreation and Parks, and I really loved her for her passion that she had. And Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much. In fact, she recently, we had her named a park in her honor. She started her career at Harvard Playground, and now it's known as Jackie Tatum Harvard Playground. One of the things that was kind of humorous when we talked with her about the naming is that at the time, the Wreckin' Park had a policy that they would not name any facility in honor of anyone unless they were deceased, and we made sure they knew that she did not want to volunteer for that, even though she certainly appreciated the honor. So they waived that rule through Rita Walters and several members of the board in order to honor her. On the date of her honor, she stood at the podium for more than 30 or 40 minutes and picked out every individual in the crowd that she had worked with, that she had started their careers, that she had promoted. It was a phenomenal day, and the icing on the cake is that when she was leaving, they had worked so quickly that the signage and everything was in play before she left, and so she got a chance to actually see Jackie Tatum Harvard Recreation Center. So I'm sorry to hear that she's passed, but we do have a memory of her at Harvard Recreation Center.
Ms. Gruel?
Condolence as well. I had to work with Jackie when she was general manager, and I worked in the mayor's office and when she was assistant general manager there. And Jackie was one of those who started a lot of those public-private partnerships with Recreation and Parks, and she was a true believer in access for all, the importance of ensuring that no matter what community you lived in the city of Los Angeles, you had access to a park and programs in that park, and that there was equality and fairness in that. And she was really an incredible woman. I feel blessed to have worked with her over those years, and she did make an indelible mark on the city of Los Angeles for many years to come, and young people will benefit from her leadership here in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, do you have another journey motion?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a journey motion in behalf of Ms. Perry. Like us to adjourn in memory of Ms. Lois Medlock, who passed away on October 31st of this year at the age of 82. She was born in 1926. She's a remarkable woman whose tremendous loyalty, passion, and vision helped shape and change the lives of countless individuals in her community. She was a hero to her family, compassionate friend, and tireless, generous contributor to the city. A very straightforward, direct person, strong-willed, constantly stood up for what she believed in. She was a passionate advocate in the 9th district and worked closely with Jan, but was most remembered because of her grace, poise, charm, and her beauty.